Welcome everybody to our Thursday, August 2nd, 2018 Forest Lake Area Schools School Board Meeting. Let's open up with Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome everybody. If you're new to a school board meeting and you'd like to find out more about it, there's some information over on the table over here, or if you'd like to speak on one of our agenda items. There's also green cards over there. Fill it out quickly and get it to me and you can have up to three minutes during our schedule and unscheduled visitors. With that, number Clark, could you please take a roll call?
Number Corcoran is absent. Member Morehead here. Number Peterson is absent. Member Odegaard?
Here.
Number Tyson?
Yes.
Number Rayfield?
Here.
And number Olsen is here.
Alright, there's no changes to the meeting agenda? Is there a motion to approve the meeting agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? No discussion, on my behalf, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Alright.
We're doing what we're doing. Scheduled and unscheduled visitors. Listing session report, number Odegaard?
Yeah, we had two teachers present talking about the levy, had this conversation, you know, brainstorming how they can get their membership more involved with the process, get the information out there as we get closer to election time. Had one parent there that was just to listen and then one other mom came towards the end, she had a bussing thing for race and then also wanted an awash in the wall with the OPS group, which was very encouraging. She never really done anything like that before and wanted to dive right in, so that's fantastic to hear. So yeah, it was pretty active for an August session, I thought.
Alright, thank you. Alright, Polaris Industries.
Alright, thank you. We're honored and thrilled to have guests with us tonight from Polaris Industries. We have several of our alumni who now work with Polaris and representatives from the Polaris Foundation who are going to talk about a partnership that we were able to develop with Polaris. And as an introduction to that partnership, I thought I would walk through some material and information that Dana Anderson, the president of the Polaris Foundation, the administrator of that program, and I have worked with over the last number of months to bring this partnership together around our engineering and design build partnership with the high school program. It's built around a framework of connecting our students at the high school level to industry and ultimately into workforce. Workforce development doesn't happen when kids leave the high school and end up in a one-year, two-year, or four-year college. It begins in high school. These kids begin to explore where their passions lie and where their skill sets may lie. And then our job of helping that process but also helping develop that skill set. So you can see the relationship between the district, the high school, the industry, various industry partners, and in this case, Polaris, in the form of workforce development. Specifically, the design build lab. And you know that we're investing through our reshaping opportunities for Success Bank in 2015 in an innovative design build lab where we're integrating engineering directly into production and build. We all know the importance of engineering and manufacturing in today's workforce and the workforce shortage as out there. We hear that on the national and state level. The design build lab is exactly the opportunity to bring the creative elements, the problem-solving pieces together where students are collaborating, communicating with each other, developing plans, problem-solving, when things don't work in the build part, going back to the engineering, tweaking, modifying, fixing, going back into the build lab to continue their work. There are many partnership benefits working directly with Polaris and you can see some of those listed here. It's an opportunity for us frankly to work with an industry driver around innovation and developing capital into the workforce. Of course, there's robust educational opportunities for students. At the very least, exposure, critical element to this is the exposure to industry. Many often, so often, our students don't know all of the various career paths and fields that exist out in the workplace and the work field and certainly in innovative company like Polaris. Mentorship internship opportunities, connecting students to engineering and manufacturing industry, enhancing Polaris synergy with existing and future connections and resources specifically with the Forest Lake community and Forest Lake School District. And we know that the Research and Development Center for Polaris is just up the road in our district of Wyoming. And of course, the Polaris branding and exposure throughout the community. Our specific partnership has come together in the formation of a significant contribution from Polaris Industries that we're extremely grateful for. And you can see at the level of $79,500 the contribution made through this partnership and how we're earmarking those dollars to be spent to upgrade and bring innovative updated equipment into the design build lab that's currently in construction at the high school. The CNC machine along the tooling, software that comes with that, JetLase updating that equipment, 3D printers, CNC plasma cutter as well. What does that look like? These are renderings of our design build lab. Along with this, we are naming and branding our design build lab. The Polaris Engineering and Design Build Lab will be the name. That'll be on the outside of our design build lab. These kids are entering that space from other parts of the school and will bring that name into the design build space as well. You can see kids working on pretty high-end equipment that has a direct tie into industry. On the engineering side, these are, this is the lab we currently have. This lab will now be tied to the design build lab. It's currently segregated from or separate from the actual build labs. Now we'll be tying those pieces together. You can see kids are in this space learning critical engineering skills and doing some pretty high-end engineering stuff taught by Kevin Revard and the Industrial Tech Department. You can see the collaborative nature of the engineering work that kids are doing, working together on projects. And you can envision that kids are designing as a team, building as a team, maybe even arguing as a team when things don't go as planned and they've got to go back to the drawing board or tweak designs and go back in and work with the specific project that they're working on. What are some of the things that can be done? These are images of actual designs that kids have done in our engineering program. These are not stock photos from Google. These are actual designs that our kids did through SolidWorks and their design software. From a CAD standpoint, an architectural standpoint, you know we build a house every year separate from this particular project, but through our Industrial Tech Department and some of the high-end work that kids are doing from a design standpoint. Actually, Mr. Kelly Nichols, our metals teacher, manufacturing instructor, also leads our super managed competition. You've seen those cars because they've come to our board meetings before. I don't know, Kelly's in the audience. What's the mile per gallon on these things, Kelly?
Two years totally, one the modified class at 498 miles per gallon.
I could really use that.
You're probably not going to drive that now, I-35. I'll take that miles per gallon. So again, some pretty neat things that our kids are doing that we'll now be able to do in the space that we're designing with the help of a partnership with Polaris. So with that, I would ask Dana Anderson and Luke and Josh and Jenna to come up and say a few things about the partnership and also if I'd ask our alumni to say a few things about your work and your learning through our program as well as how that has prepared you for working in this. Come on up.
Hi, yeah, is this?
We have a mic there if you want to speak into the mic.
Oh, okay. Well, thank you so much for welcoming us. My name is Dana Anderson and I manage the Polaris Foundation. We are more than honored to be a part of this amazing project, so thank you. One of our, we have a lot of objectives with the Polaris Foundation. Communities are number one. We like to focus our donation dollars into communities where we have facilities, where we have employees, where our employees are raising their families. So to give such an exciting innovative donation to this type of project is huge, so thank you for that. STEM is another one of our initiatives, kind of checks that box too. And our hope is that eventually, these kids who are taking part in this lab will come and work for us. So it's helping our workforce as well. So thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Kucher, former 2007 graduate of Forest Lake High School, current layout designer at Polaris Industries in Wyoming. My daily job consists of pretty much spinning CAD is what we call it in the industry. But you can't just spin CAD all day. You have to go out, build it, and make sure it works. When I was in high school, we could design it, but there were, we didn't have the technology to physically build it, make it, see if it actually works. Being able to have these machines and 3D printers and have the kids learn how to do it is just going to make their advancement for the real world much better off. It's an amazing thing that Forest Lake is doing and I'd probably be a part of it.
Well, I don't have too much to add. Luke pretty much hit it on the head. I am, just an introduction for myself, I graduated 2012 from Forest Lake High School and currently in the development program with Polaris, with the military too. Working on a pastime program, if you've seen that in the news at all. Like I said, Luke hit it on the head, it's an important skill to go from, you know, computer work to actually building something. And I think this partnership will really develop those skills for the students.
Hi guys, hi. I'm Jenna Navatney. I graduated from Forest Lake in 2010, so I've been at Polaris for almost five years now, I think. Came here right after college. I graduated from the University of Minnesota. I currently work in our product quality and safety group at Polaris, so making sure vehicles are safe for our customers and making sure that they're the highest quality that they can be before we have customers get in them and ride them. So a thing that I am really proud to be here is I work on the Polaris Foundation with Dana. So I'm on the team and that's a big thing that we like to do is give back to our local communities that we have in the surrounding areas where all of our locations are. I ended up moving back once I went to the University of Minnesota, right back here near Forest Lake, so I'm really proud to be able to work with you guys to give this out here in the community. And I'm happy to see the career development that'll come out of this too. I think it's come a long way since I've been there for sure and I'm happy to see it and hope you guys can maybe invite us back for a tour.
Absolutely.
Thanks guys.
Thank you so much.
Question?
I just remember back how proud we were when Polaris was coming to Wyoming and building that and how we just could visualize all of the great possibilities it would be for Forest Lake and the surrounding areas. And now I sit here still and to see this donation is amazing. So thankful for the students and grateful to Polaris. I'll put their name anywhere. Excellent.
I was in Polaris building when I was a senior in high school and I told myself this. And it'd be really nice to get a job there. It's close to home, working on this stuff.
It's good to have you still.
Yeah, I'd like to add a little member of ours that, I mean, Polaris is such a great company. My dad was a world-class for Polaris. So my grandpa worked on the line up there for 20 years after he retired. And, you know, that's kind of the lifeblood of that community out there. That's the big company in town. I've got two ATVs myself, but Polaris, fantastic. And I mean, it's just such a great company. And the fact that, you know, you're willing to partner with us on this is just outstanding. It's a real win for our district and for everybody, so thank you so much.
I just want to thank you all for being here tonight and for this fabulous donation. This is just an amazing partnership. And Dana, thank you for all your work on this. Nice to see you again. I think that anytime our students can get their hands on kind of critical working with machinery that will be doing them there and when they advance their career is just so beneficial. I mean, in our nursing programs, those students are kind of jump-started. I mean, that's just giving them a jump-start into working for a fabulous company like Polaris in the future. So thank you. It's so nice to hear from the graduates that work there. We're very proud of you, so thank you so much.
And I think, I think for my part, I got this frustration that my kids and my kids' friends, you know, when they were going through high school and they were trying to figure out what they were going to do, I was like, you should go into engineering. Because I know personally, being in product development, how exciting it is to think of, to be faced with a problem, to think through the solution, to be able to go through that process of building it and then to hold something in your hand that moves and comes alive and solves that problem. You know, and the kids are all like, okay, whatever, you know, because they don't, they don't have a way of really connecting with, with that, that sense that you can think it and do it and create it, you know. And I think that's why I'm so excited about this because that brings that into our high school where you're going to get a bunch of kids who are in there, they're doing all that stuff, but then they're going to infect everybody else too. Because they're going to be doing this really cool stuff. They're going to be building stuff. They're going to be building these machines and these robots. And then other people are going to be seeing that. And I think it's just, Forest Lake, we take science and engineering very seriously. It's something we're really proud of. And so I think that the more we can bring everybody on board with it, the better. And so, yeah, I'm just thrilled.
Thank you doesn't seem nearly enough. You guys have really stood by your mission of STEM and community, so thank you, thank you, thank you. This program is so incredible that I almost wish I still had kid in high school. Imagine that. So thank you.
Well, and hopefully it'll help Polaris too if later on it is going to spend with the workforce.
We practice for teacher giving, so we, every donation we make, we want something in return.
Well, I think you've got a couple right there.
And so that is what we hope that our workforce will be helped out.
Couple right there already.
I was making comments in the background. When you did it on the button, can I send some of my workload to you?
And certainly we have to get them on a tour.
Absolutely, yes. I just want to give acknowledgement to Kelly Nichols, that's all my two teachers, our innovative teachers who are behind some of this work. Jim Cobble and his high school leadership will be carrying this mission forward and engaging kids in this work, so we've got a lot of talent.
Alright, so I think what we'll do is we'll take a five-minute recess and we'll take some pictures and we'll get back to the business of our meeting. Alright, we ready to get started again? Alright, student achievement. Dave Sauer, our Future Problem Solvers Advisor. Come on up.
Welcome again.
It's really nice to be here and thanks again for having us in front of you tonight. And thank you as a board and a school district for being supportive of our after-school programs like future problem solving. And just wanted to introduce Stephen Winnick tonight. We've been doing future problem solving in the district for quite a few years. And Stephen is our highest ever finisher at the international conference. So he competed in early June at the international conference. There were 44 states and nine foreign countries represented and he could tell you a little bit more about that, so.
Alright, so this, earlier this June, or this June, I competed again at the international competition for future problem solving. And the topic this year was criminal justice systems. So the scenario was basically a city was trying to implement a new system in order to keep their streets safer by using more advanced technologies and things that would kind of have like remote surveillance on their citizens. So obviously, this poses a lot of challenges and we kind of had to look at what those challenges are and find a great solution that would help the city.
So can you kind of describe a little bit about how the competition process works?
Sure. So everybody is given this scenario of kind of what's going on in this potential future city. And then there's a six-step process that you go through in order to find the best solution for that scenario. So it starts with brainstorming, what are the challenges? What, what could go wrong and what will go wrong? And then next, you kind of pick the biggest one. And then you find a list of solutions, figure out which one is the best.
Stephen, are you alone or are you with a group?
So there's kind of two different aspects of the competition. There's a team, you could compete as a team, but I competed as an individual.
And you solved all the problems?
Yeah.
We need that.
What grade are you going into and how long have you been participating in?
I'm going to be a junior this year and I've been participating in Future Problem Solvers since I was in fifth grade.
Congratulations on that. What did they say? What's?
Seventh place. Yeah.
Lots of country.
What an achievement.
Yep.
Yeah, well, congratulations. We appreciate you representing our school and, you know, we always love things like problem solvers and it really represents the best of what, you know, our students, you know, not just being able to memorize things. It's about being able to take a bunch of information, analyze it, and come up with a good solution and come up with good, and that's what, you know, that's what makes people successful in the real world. So really appreciate you going out there and representing Forest Lake.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, you're welcome.
We also have to remember Stephen was also involved in the branding committee, I believe, that I was on.
Yeah.
And did just such a great job on the committee as well, so it's been an asset in more ways than one.
Well, thank you.
Also, I mentioned, Stephen was taking advanced placement courses at the high school institute. He's a high school student. He might be in calculus eight or nine or a group of them, so.
He's teaching, he's teaching calculus now.
Calculus F and X, yeah.
He could advantage of post-graduate enrollment in our advanced programming and all that. Need to see our system be flexible to meet the needs of Stephen and others with those kind of gifts and.
Okay, alright, thank you.
Thank you for coming.
Alright, Lynwood Elementary, Principal Mueller.
Good evening. Thank you for giving me some time to speak tonight. What I'm going to do tonight is kind of walk you through the current state of our construction project out of Lynwood. It's been quite a summer. Before I get there though, I just want to say I'm going into my second year as Lynwood's principal, but this is my first opportunity to speak with you. And moving into the elementary level was a new thing for me. I started my career as a high school English teacher and then spent some time as a curriculum coordinator here in the district and then went to the junior high as the assistant principal. And now my first kind of foray with elementary kids. And I was a little skeptical. I was like, I don't know how I'll do with these young kids. But this year has been amazing. If you are ever having a down day and you got some time to come out and just sit in a kindergarten room, it'll lift you right up. In my two years as an assistant principal, you know, we're handling discipline for 800 students, I never once received anything like this.
Oh, wonderful.
A heart with their best attempt at principal, their crisble. So this is, this is going to be framed in my office as a reminder of what a good opportunity this was, so thank you for that. I'll get into the construction. So Lynwood is, if you haven't done the math, somewhere between 19 and 57 years old if you count all the different pieces of it. It's quite a jigsaw there. But we are going to be moving toward a state in which we'll be zero to 46 years old by removing some of the oldest sections of the building. We did this summer have some temporary moves that had to happen, but we didn't have the big moves that happened in a lot of schools. We only had to move two teachers for the summer. The staff was very happy with that, that they didn't have to pack everything and then unpack everything as the start of the year. Just a first grade and a fifth grade classroom. We just temporarily moved their things out of there. The reason for that, you'll see in a diagram I show you later, is that some structural steel had to happen above their classrooms to accommodate the second story where all of the equipment will be in the new section of the building. They just didn't want anything in those rooms at the time. And then for my part, we spent and are spending this summer in the band room at the back of the building where they've allowed us to have some sort of power and internet, but no running water. So we're getting used to going out to our established facilities and parking lot. Summer access has been fairly limited as well, just a small portion of the 1972 portion of the building and only from the backside of the building. So we've been a little hidden, but we've reached out through technology and those kind of things and made sure that people know where we are and can reach us and we can do the work of the summer. Those oldest portions, as I mentioned, the 61 and 64 portions were quickly demolished. They were chomping at the bit to knock that piece down and we had to say, we need the kids out first, right? So they did that within days of the end of the year. And like I said, large portions of the building without power and water for the summer. You can see the two rooms in red there are the ones that'll be closest to that new portion of the building. So those were emptied out. The music room there is where we've been temporarily off of and that blue section represents kind of the only part of the building that is not a hard hat area. So we're really kind of in that corner. We've made it work. It's been an adventure. It's going to be a tight fit for the next year. We're going to have a lot of movement. We're moving some classes around. Our copy room and our lounge are moving to a room that were opened up by a third grade classroom, moving to a now-open first grade classroom. Our orchestra is going to take place in the media center for the next year. Title one is going to be in a sectioned off space in that same media center. We have one special ed classroom that moved to an open room. And through the generous work of the SAT team and the preschool, shout out to our community head people in the room here, they have agreed to share a space for the year. They're not on the same time schedule and they thought, well, why not? This is a good way to problem solve that. We know you're very short. And that actually came from the SAT coordinator with us, Alicia Larson, who is an amazing SAT coordinator. I hope she never goes anywhere. Maybe her there, right? We get to keep her. So that meant a lot of movement here and this is purposely kind of jumbled. This is all the different classroom materials and things that had to move around. And I just wanted to shout out again to our high-quality custodial staff out there. Tom Nichols and his assistant Scott really had this timed and set and ready so that the second the kids were gone, they could start moving things in the order that they needed to be moved so that that 61 and 64 portion of blue and yellow could come down pretty quickly. For the 18, 19 operations, we are on pace for the building habitable goal of August 14th. Occupancy of that is going to be more likely the 27th, the day the teachers come back. It'll be the first time that they're allowed to come into the building. Always a tight schedule because teachers are dedicated and they want to get in as early as they can and as soon as they can and as often as they can to get ready for the year. But the basic operations of the building will not change, even though I'll show you that it'll look a little interesting. But all of our entrances and exits will be used the same way as before. Bus procedures will be largely unaffected, just some loss of a little bit of parking. Access to the playgrounds will be unaffected during the construction of the following year. And a new bathroom in the 99 section will not be accessible during this school year. So this is the new hallway. It was built in the same place that the old hallway was because it has to be there to link. So the construction guys talk about it as the link. It is the hallway that will connect the two islands for the 18, 19 academic year. That'll make more sense in this next picture. But work will continue externally above and on both sides of that hallway throughout the school year. But we'll be able to access this safely during the year. So the building will look like that for this school year. The blue areas will be where there'll be ongoing work during the school year. The large red area at the top there is our lay-down space where all the materials are stored. And then the red mark on the right is where the construction trailers, that's a little loss of parking. And then the other red lines are just fences to keep things safe. loss of parking, and then the other red lines are just fences to keep things safe. The new construction, the 2018 portion, that'll be on the same footprint as the 61, 64 spaces. As you can see there, large office complex, the secure vestibule, which we're really excited about, is just gonna add a level of safety and security that we're not, haven't been in a habit of having. We do our best with what we have right now and the Raptor system and keeping kids safe, but this is really gonna shore things up. You can see SAC there on the left of the vestibule will have their own buzz-in system and be able to allow kids in for SAC in the morning. Current system is that the door is open for SAC drop-off from six to the time school starts and from the end of school to the end of SAC. Now they'll have an opportunity to be a little more secure there. Here you can see an actual photo of that, the big opening in the middle of the photo, that is where the main entrance will enter into the hallway. Things go quick, if you're not out there getting a picture, you lose your vantage point pretty quickly, you can already see the outside wall of that SAC space going up right now. The summer of 19, we're gonna be completely empty and vacate the entire building and that's gonna be the big move. Teachers were excited not to have to move this summer, but they're ramping up for the big move in the next summer. That's because during that summer, there's gonna be a near gutting of that 72 portion, that portion of the green and then finishes throughout the building. Summer of 19 then really digs into, like I said, that green portion here will be redesigned with some great new special ed spaces, new orchestra and band spaces and just a much better layout for students. Just another touch on the safety and security point, we have historically had kind of a iffy situation where buses are lined up at the end of the day and parents doing, pick up a drop-off, have to walk between those buses, always a no-no. The new construction is gonna allow for a painted space there where buses will not park, that'll allow a much wider gap for parents to move between that space much more safely. So we're excited to add that. Here's some 3D renderings, this is the finished product, you can see the darker portion, they'll have a darker brick facade on the nude space and you can see that second story, which is equipment. That was the reason for those two rooms needing to be vacated for the summer. Moving really quickly, there's a close-up of the front of the school, new positioning of flag poles, that's without all the beautiful shrubbery that'll be there too, but it's gonna be exciting. I think the people of Linwood are very excited and proud of their school and I think that kids do better in a space that, you know, they're proud of. We've seen that with all these construction projects, we're gonna see a bump, I think. One last thing I did want to touch on that's not construction related, we're working out at Linwood to expand the role of the school forest all the time, want to make that a more integrated portion of our school. The 1617 Tefla grant allowed the creation of a trail camera curriculum for the school forest, involved the placement of motion triggered photography on trail cameras on the trees, sixth grade usually would go out and place those and then the resulting data could be used all the way from K to six for science, math and literacy. We had a generous donation of time, the curriculum was developed by Jennifer Bredo, I'm sure that that's been spoken about here before, parent who is a biology teacher at North Heaven Technical. In 1819, we'll be adding a classroom set of iPods for more personal data collection and creative works through photos and videos. What this is gonna allow students to do is go out and capture things that they're interested in, aspects of the woods that pop out to them and then create narratives around those ideas. So we're excited to see how that goes in the next year. And one thing that has been on the discussion is how is it possible to get Wi-Fi out in the woods? That would really expand the possibilities out in the classroom, you could take a set of Chromebooks and find a place to sit and work on the same thing you would work on in a classroom, but in the beauty of that forest. It's a great asset. Every tour I give and when I tell them about what's in our backyard, stars in their eyes, amazing, they think, oh, I didn't know about this, right? This is amazing, I want my kids to go here, it's a real jewel for our district. Any questions?
Compared to you and Lino, I think those two, Lino and Linwood, the results are so amazing, I mean, all the buildings have gotten upgraded and everything, but I think those two elementaries are just gonna pop, people are gonna be just running to get there.
Yeah, like I said, it's gonna be tight quarters, you know, for this next year, but when we open brand new in fall of 19, we're gonna take all comers, we're gonna fill that building up, we have lots of space to expand.
Yeah, I just wanted to follow comment by Karen was saying that, I mean, I used to work in that building, it's just transformed, especially like going to entrance. So when there's a, there's a building in a house we used to do preschool, how are we affecting, what does it look like in comparison to that structure that's over there?
Oh, country schoolhouse?
Yeah.
The preschool, yeah. We will not impact the structure of that at all, their ease of access to our building, they walk, kids over every morning and kids walk back, that should all be unaffected, yeah. We want to keep that flow. I spoke at the preschool graduation this year and most of those kids are coming across the parking lot next year as kindergarteners, so we want to keep that relationship strong.
And it was always delighting that in Linwood was, you know, kind of dark, so it just looks like that entry was just gonna be still open and just totally transformed.
Yeah, it's gonna be great.
One more question, Joe, about the forest, how do you structure the time out there for the different classrooms, K through S, do you?
You know, it's really open, it's really open, they work through the office, they let us know, we're gonna take the kids out, this is what our plan is, this is how long we're gonna be. They have radio communication, so if anything comes up, they can let us know. They do get out there formally three times a year, each classroom does, through a relationship with the Wargo Nature Center. They send out a naturalist three times a year and every class gets to go out there for lessons. Really great stuff. I was out there for a lesson with, I believe it was, fourth graders and they did a predator prey game in which the Wargo Nature Center naturalist was the predator and he was out in the middle of the field and they were the prey and they had to move while he closed his eyes and then if he could find them. And then they went into the woods and did that and how much easier it was for them to hide in the woods and, you know, the difference between, you know, the different locations and why predator might choose a certain place to stake out and why the prey would find out where they are. Another great lesson they did was how small animals burrow in the snow, so they were up there in the middle of the winter and they took, he had a thermos of hot water and he filled two jars, this is a mouse that's gonna be in this little thing, we're gonna build a nice warm space and this mouse doesn't build a thing and they sat and talked for a while and they took measurements of the temperature of the water in those two things and how adequately built burrow saved the body temperature of that mouse and this other mouse was not as lucky.
That's just great and I think you're right, that's just gonna be a jewel for the school, that, you know, parents can have their kids out in their natural environment in their beautiful forest.
I mean, I've personally fallen in love with the school forest. This last spring I took to, on Fridays, actually parking at the north entrance to the park and walking the one mile blue line through the park to the back of the school as part of my morning commute and it's a good way to start the day, really good.
Looking like you're doing quite well with the little ones, have you found you're smarter than a fifth grader yet?
Men's, which ones?
Still working on that.
There's a Stephen Winnick in the group. Maybe run.
Well, congratulations on making it your first year and have better luck and.
Thank you.
More achievements and things.
Great presentation, Joe, I just want to say thank you for keeping your eye on the prize because it is gonna be a difficult year, but as long as you and staff are Elliot and Ronette and educate parents of what's to come.
Yep.
You guys will get through it just fine.
Yeah, thank you.
Thanks.
All right, any help? All right, thank you.
Thanks for coming.
Thank you.
All right, positive happening, so member Ordegaard, you want to start?
Yeah, not much school activity on my front, but a lot of community stuff, you know, arts in the park, you can take a camp down there and, you know, just things like that, enjoying my exposure in town, yeah.
All right, member Tyson?
This came of mail, so it's exciting to see that, it's something like that. And well done, so it's September 13th this year, so we can forward to that. Karen and I, along with the superintendent, got to go to the banquet for the Minnesota Association of Native Cultural Educators where we got the outstanding Middle Secondary School Aida Program Award. So that was just a fabulous night, kudos to our team that got and spoke on the senior line, Brown for Ward and, and, and they are for their sister.
Mike and, yeah.
No, it was a very fun night and we were very proud to be there and kudos to them, they did an amazing job. And that's it, I'm trying to say this loop, just, oh, I want to mention one thing, I'm unable to go, but the MSK's summer seminar is Monday, so I'm not able to go, but, okay, I just know, I want to report because I'm running late for the call, so.
Okay, we'll do.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you. Other than exciting building projects happening, I don't really have much, member Olson?
Went to the Taste through the Lake Center, Gail, you also went to that?
Thank you.
It was a good event, good food, good drinks, good prizes. We missed the raffle this year, but you can all bring it back next year.
And they do many less, well attended.
Yes, very much so, what did they say, attendance wise?
Twice as many as last year.
Yeah, you could tell.
Nice.
Very busy, so.
Okay.
Yes, spoke with him at Rotary today and he said that they made about the same, even though they had twice as many people, but they introduced a lot of new people, it was a new event for the golf course, not the golf course.
Lake Center?
Yeah, the White Haven and that they have reduced the prices for the tickets and so he was very, very pleased that they maintained the same amount of money coming back.
And I noticed it was very well attended from the Shasaw side.
Right.
So I think finding a, you know, closer proximity for both counties worked out well.
And they'll, they'll figure it out how to get a bigger place because it was a little bit crowded, but, but yeah, I was happy to go to that and very pleased to go to the award and very happy with the Times for giving it quite a nice little write-up of our students. And so I'll let you know after one day when the seminar is about.
Thanks.
All right, reports, workshop and conferences, anybody? Okay, 916, member Olson?
We met yesterday, talked about some open houses, if anyone's interested in the Cora Education Center, which is in Little Canada and that's coming up soon, I can get you that information. They also talked about, it's called a moving forward presentation and just kind of their mission and goals for the year and they're really gonna focus, they see that as soon as they build a new school, it fills to capacity almost immediately. So they're really trying to figure out, without building more buildings, how can they most efficiently serve the kids? So they're gonna try some methods this year and they're also doing some amazing things with the Mental Health Innovation Grant this year, so that's very exciting.
Okay, thank you. Equity Alliance, member Moorhead?
We had Edson's last time and we are meeting on the 15th and the work ahead of us will now be to find a new executive director, so it's gonna be a tough job to replace Jane for sure. And they're looking for a place, they're trying to alternate the meetings, so they do come out into the district sometime and November is open, so I would probably looking to Mr. Massey to find out if that would be something he'd want to do, have to come out and have a meeting here.
Great.
Yeah, it's fun to get to know them on a personal basis and, so think about it, if it's okay, I'll let him know because White Bear is next and then it's in November's open.
Did we have one of you here?
We did.
Wasn't that the media center, wasn't that the workroom?
It was here.
No, it wasn't the new style of construction.
Then they took a tour.
Science base.
Right, of the science base.
All right, City of Forest Lake, member Moorhead or Tyson? Any updates?
Again, the.
City administrator, there are the candidates. I was up at the Cogia and met the new candidate, and she introduced herself to me, she was referred to City of Forest Lake by Ashley LeVale, who was our community co-teacher with some time. And anyway, her name is Ashley, so they nicknamed her Ashley 2.0. Very, very nice name.
Well, there are some public meetings coming up, she, they're gonna be interviewing the different candidates and they're gonna have a reception. Again, the Forest Lake Times did a very nice job of outlining all of the information on that, I was very appreciative of the article that they put in, so.
Great, thank you. Reshaping opportunities for success 2015, 2020, Director Martini?
Thank you, it's really exciting to have had not only Polaris, but Joe talk about his construction project and have Hannah in the room because earlier this evening, earlier today, Renee Reedy and I took Hannah on a tour through the high school and through the middle school and she also wanted to see upstairs and downstairs of the science wing and folks were actually over there working since she didn't have to wear a hard hat in that area. But we did take her through the media center, the areas that are still under construction where hard hats are necessary and much like you folks experienced last year, we were trying to convince her that, no, we will be done. And this section that looks completely unfinished will be done in three weeks to look just like those rooms across the hall. So that was pretty neat. Also, I think it's exciting that you've got a chance to meet Stacy Childers from Springsteen last meeting. I know Gail has heard her before and we were really excited on that low interest rate on those bonds. That was really neat that Baird had created that market. I also got to share with Hannah how busy Mike is, just running around to the different construction meetings. He is at all of these different sites, frequently called back and things of that nature, so I think that this is just kind of a neat process that we're involved in, we're so blessed that voters approve that. I've got just a few pictures of the elementary schools to share with you and I do have some aerial shots also of the middle schools. So this is the new house in the foreground and you can see the additional asphalt. Now asphalt's a secret word because I don't have too many other shots, but we're gonna be laying asphalt at all sorts of sites over the next week or so. Forest Lake Elementary, as you know, was completed, but their parking lots already been built up and ready for final grading and concrete work is gonna start tomorrow. So they're involved heavily in the project. Here is a view as you look north of the new house and all of the entrance area of the concrete. If we back away, they've got light poles ready to be placed, those will be done before the start of school. And off to the right, of course, the new gymnasium, you can see that, so that's pretty exciting. Here's another view, we went inside there, they're still connecting up some ductwork, still connecting up some piping for the chilled water that's gonna go throughout the facility. So we had to wear our personal protective equipment, hard hats, goggles, the vests as we walked through that area, but it was really neat to see that floor, the all-purpose floor, all done in that facility. Turning our attention over to Linwood, so Joe showed you that the middle of the building, the oldest portions were eliminated and yet that hallway that you could look down in his presentation is in the middle and here's another view of that. And that wall for SAC is already built, so just a couple days later after his photo, things do move quickly. Here is a look at the roof of that connecting linear hallway and going from the southern part of the building towards the north. And he had said, yeah, we've got laydown area for materials that's currently out front off to the right and out back where you see those 18-wheeled trailers and then the playground in the back. They'll be able to use the playground area, but he did have some of those other zones as red zones that you can't cross. Over at Lino Lakes, they're doing final roofing, central roofing's on site, they're actually picking gravel out of that truck to dump on the roofs. So here's another shot, final grading for the parking lot happened today, then the water truck was out there, I saw that about 4:30 as I was driving by. And this is Scandia now, member Tyson, hitting, expressed a curiosity about, I think, the pyramid-like structures reemerging. Those are the duct houses, so the roof is already on those duct houses, ductwork is continuing through the building and there's a duct house. Ductwork is continuing through the building and there's a duct house for the section in the far back. You can see it a little better in this next photo. So we've got the two sets of duct house. Where the roof is high enough, ductwork goes down the hallway. So of course at the high school, of course at the, the middle school and taller portions of Scandia, all that ductwork runs um, in the hallway just above the ceiling. But those two wings where we have duct house were too short in terms of hallway height. So Scandia has quite a bit of uh, work, confident that kids are gonna occupy, but we will be doing a lot of mechanical work throughout the September as well. So a quick look to Wyoming, I think you saw this slide a month ago, we're still in design. We're gonna take the parking lot uh, that's up here or up point to this part and put that out as a bid alternate as well. We're still waiting for the architects to provide uh, interior design, but at Wyoming, we're trying to air condition the perimeter classrooms and put in the secure vestment. That's the essence of the project, but we'll have to see when design comes back what those costs are, if we need to do anything, if we need to work with current further or if we can do some things possibly in restrooms or things of that nature. So we've been lucky all along, as board member Peterson always asks. We're on budget, we're on time, um, it's exciting. And I mentioned to Hannah that every time I find a penny on the ground, I pick it up, put it in my pocket, and I showed her one I found yesterday, so this is pretty neat stuff. With that, any questions or comments?
Here, did you think it, um, pavement at Wyoming?
Not at Wyoming, they might have done some patching. Certainly could have done some patching because that is in rough shape.
And then there's new city sidewalks, I just don't find them today.
So part of the Safe Routes to Schools program through MINDOT with some federal funding. Phase two of Safe Routes to School in the City of Forest Lake, it's a project led by Goldman Mink, but we had Scott and Scott participate, Gary, when he was at Southwest and then Ernest from Forest View. I think Jeff actually started the process and then Kenny at Forest Lake helped finish the process. So they've got sidewalk from the CLC all the way down to Forest View and they've got east-west connections with the trail and just north of CLC, so it's really exciting.
So you answered my question, that is Safe Routes to School, right?
Yep.
Those are really nice.
Oh, is he?
Yeah, and their, their trail width, so.
Yeah.
You could drive your Polaris ATV if the city were.
Well, and we have to remember to thank Ryan, the city engineer, because he's just phenomenal in getting grant money and those sidewalks that connect everywhere now, even by the middle school and to St. Peters. That whole thing was done with his expertise of getting the money.
Yes, thank you for that.
We just talk about not letting anyone go forever. He's one that I hope we never have to say goodbye to.
He's the city engineer at Scandia, so he has been uh, very involved in approval of our concepts and approach on Scandia as well.
Very pro Forest Lake, just really.
So the last section of the area is a state college school?
So we don't have any other grants pending. That program still exists. It's got less infrastructure dollars to build a trail, but it does still exist.
We're really connected even now.
All right. Any other questions? All right, thank you.
Good job.
All right, Superintendent's Report, Dr. Massey?
Thank you. Uh, thanks to Joe for his presentation. And just a quick note, and Joe, you pointed this out, the the attention to detail, the shepherding of the work with Mike and the principals throughout the summer. The attention to detail is, is really critical and all these folks are displaced over offices. Teachers are coming back to a lot of work getting classrooms ready, but they do that with a lot of excitement, knowing that they went back to new space. So Joe, thank you for your leadership through all that and your work for us, and pretty critical. I don't have much to add on the construction update, other than we're still earmarking a September, Saturday, September date for an open house. Looking to capture an open house opportunity at high school, middle school, Scandia, Lionel Lakes. And we're tentatively scheduled for September twenty-second. In the next week or two, we'll nail that date down. Looking at perhaps a ten to two window there and create a real solid location opportunity at the schools for the community to come and have a walk-through, we'll get students in the schools for help with tours and to showcase the incredible space that our community has made the investment for us to improve and to create. So an exciting opportunity for that. Next week, August seventh and eighth, our administrative team will be gathering in our second round of administrative retreat looking at student achievement data and diving deep into uh, the, the results of our work on literacy, math, and science. So we're looking forward to the opportunity to work as a team, analyzing our data and setting goals and targets for the upcoming year. By way of our levy update, we have now scheduled six community conversations going right back through the community conversation route that we went through last December and January, where we engaged the community of our conversations related to a field referendum last year. And we use those opportunities to engage the community in what the need is this time through. So we have Scandia, Lionel, Lynwood, Wyoming, Columbus, and Forest Lake proper for those meetings. And those will happen in uh, late September and early to mid-October. And those dates are scheduled and ready to go. We learned from the community conversations the last time through that we needed a stronger presence in our various communities, as our communities are different and unique. One centralized message, while critical, it doesn't necessarily connect and resonate in all the different communities. So one of the strategies we're using to inform our community and to engage our community, our school-based strategy, community-based strategy, I'm sorry. Principals are working with holdables, teams together with leaders from the schools and the community that will then identify the various activities, events, leaders, gatherings, folks in those communities that we can engage in the levy conversation around information and getting out the vote. As you know, the school year, we're in August, so the school year is just around the corner, believe it or not. New teachers start August twenty-first and they'll be together August twenty-first, twenty-second, and twenty-third. Buildings are planned in various student orientations, some of which will be in modified spaces because of construction. All teachers are back on Monday, the twenty-seventh of August and will be together through the week through August thirty-first, with the first day of school starting next Tuesday after liberty. School Board, you, our, our, all district staff day will be the twenty-eighth, that Tuesday. So member Morehead, if you're orchestrating an event, that is your day.
Do I have to pacify you or not?
Uh, you might want to do that.
Former superintendent.
So anyway, that's, the, the staff always look forward to that, so don't let us down. We do have a keynote speaker that I encourage to be the speaker candidate for, Anton Troyer. Troyer is a, a national speaker around equity. He's written books around his work with Native Americans and he will continue our district line dialogue around equity. We're looking forward to that. That's the fourth one I've heard.
All right, thank you.
Mr. Chairman, you did get my email about, we have an Eman meeting on the fifteenth, which is gonna be a big meeting. He wanted us all to be on.
Yeah, so the gathering of those school-based community teams is August fifteenth, five PM to seven PM. At Stars and Starks, so a great opportunity for US board members to engage with that group as well.
And I had another thought, but it's kind of a bad one. For the tour on the twenty-second, you know, I could just envision, since our schools are kind of like all over the place, having maybe a bus that would go from one to the other to take people. But then I thought to myself, no, really, you're interested in the one that your student's gonna be in. But then I think like myself, if they don't have students, it'd be fun to at least have them see a couple. And maybe that's something to think about, but it didn't really play well after I thought about it twice.
I think it, it, you're on to something and I think if we create a schedule and also want to follow that schedule all over, perhaps at the senior center and go to the high school, middle school, maybe Columbus. Columbus represents a lot of the work happening throughout the district. So I think, I think it's a good opportunity to give the community a chance to ride on their muscles and get to a lot of, of schools.
It's not one of those party buses.
Well, that's kind of maybe what made me change my mind, but now it's back in order, we did say a party bus, okay.
But I think that's been brought up, like when people are excited, there will be a bus, so we'll welcome that.
Yeah, just a couple of the highlighters.
All right. Let's move on to our consent agenda, I'm gonna pull item seven-one. Do people, is anybody in favor of pulling anything seven-two through seven-four?
Will approval of seven-two, seven-four? Seven-four.
Any discussion? If there's no discussion, all in favor say aye. Aye. All opposed? All right, thank you. All right, seven-one, uh, just a changing of the minutes. It should read that, uh, it should be stated that the regular meeting of June twenty-eighth recessed rather than adjourned before the closed session. Uh, so do we have a motion to approve the July nineteen minutes and the June twenty-eighth minutes as corrected?
We want to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? If there's no discussion, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Thank you. All right, donations, member Odegaard?
Yes, four it is through tonight. Fifty dollars from Yorkos LLC, Anderson Corporation, for Forest Lake Area Middle School, Pursuit of Classroom Supplies and Curriculum. One thousand five hundred dollars from Educational Cooperative Service Unit of the Metro Twin Cities area for Forest View Elementary, Pursuit of Staff T-shirts. One thousand five hundred ninety-two dollars and seventy-two cents from Forest Lake Girls Soccer Booster Club, the high school girls soccer teams for payment towards uniforms. And one thousand seventy dollars from Ronald Akin to Community Education Link Program for a total of four thousand two hundred twelve dollars and seventy-two cents. To that, I will just roll up all those.
Can you just re-read?
Second?
Any discussion?
This is one that you might appreciate, because I'm looking at this, then, staff and, and student t-shirts matching, of course. Payment towards uniforms matching, of course. So I have gone away maybe after the board with my uniform question and I see that quite a few schools are already using partial uniforms when they all dress the same. So just lay the groundwork so no one will get too excited if I bring it up again.
We'll consider it a success.
Thank you, it's well done. We'll talk. I just wanted to point that out to you, that there's a lot of similarity in things here.
All right. So is there any further discussion on donations? No further discussion, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you. Old Business, nine-one, determined school board, member liaisons to schools twenty-eighteen, twenty-nineteen. So um, we're missing some members tonight, so we'll just assign them as we feel necessary. Member Odegaard will be leaving us and so uh, we'll just have you assigned and then when somebody new comes on, they'll take your place. And uh, all right, we're ready to go? All right, Columbus Elementary.
Same with me?
Sure, and Karen?
I mean, I'd hate to bring it up too, because I'll cry, but I won't be here either and probably say.
That was just too hard for me to say.
Yeah, right.
Yeah, my mistake.
Before we start, Chair, we did have a document that had the Times in the nights of the meetings. I'm not sure where it went, but we've had that made because it's time for society. So we had a new document for the liaisons made that sent them late, remember that?
This is just school building liaison, right? This is a committee.
No, but it helps to know what night of the week their PTO meets and what time.
Yeah, I didn't see, I didn't see that, but that would be a great document to have.
We did have that made.
I didn't remember it.
I probably lost my thing, I haven't, you know.
Because it's even good to have the document where it showed everyone who was a liaison where.
Does that help determine a, you know, if I could make it there on that night or at that certain time?
And that's good, because I had a conflict, I had two of mine at the same night and.
Maybe we can kind of pick our brains to determine who needs when and where and what time, because they're all different.
And I don't know, of course, if they'll be the same next year, because they'll have new PTO people and.
Usually they'll change their times, I promise.
Yeah.
Do you have you?
Uh, I don't know if they did or not, but it'd be a great document to have.
They, they may change a bit, they're not in homeschool.
Okay. Um, all right. Well, why don't we, uh, we'll go to a school and if somebody's familiar with the time, they can um, state that. If, if not, we'll just move forward. Columbus Elementary, currently, uh, member Olson and member Odegaard. I think.
Their PTO meetings were every single school board Thursday. So you make a single one, because we had school board, every single one.
And I believe theirs are at seven or at six PM.
Honestly, don't know.
Okay. That's better, because it's on school board Thursday.
Yeah.
I used to go to Gosville, I used to go to Colonisus.
See, they may have switched.
You mean they'll change it, yeah.
All right. Okay, so Columbus Elementary, do we have two board members? I'd be willing to be one.
Well, you're already going to have someone replace Luke, did you say he was liaison?
Yeah, Luke's current, currently on there. You want to stay?
You can put me wherever you need me.
Okay. Why don't you, uh, Luke stay on Columbus then, if there's nobody else uh, that actively wants that? Forest Lake Elementary, currently member Corcoran and member Tyson?
And Tyson.
What's that?
Tyson.
Yeah, okay, I, I apologize.
I would like to switch.
Okay.
It might be a good one for a new person to be on, it's in town.
It's right in town and.
So I'd be glad to put my name there.
Okay, member Morehead and um, should we put member Corcoran on there too? Just leave her on there?
Yeah, because that's close.
Yeah.
Close by for her and both those groups meet on the same night together, so.
Forest View Elementary, currently member Corcoran and member Tyson?
I think they go together, don't they?
Yeah, they do, they do, they go together on the same night.
Okay, just assign the same two then?
Yeah.
Okay, good. Uh, Lionel Lakes Elementary, member Morehead and member Tyson?
Whoever takes that just should know not to take Scandia, because they're the same night.
And I think I'd like to switch to Scandia this year, just because I haven't had it for a long time, so.
I'd like to be on Lionel then. Somebody else?
No, it's fine. I've had Lionel several times.
Okay, let's put Mr., uh, let's put member Peterson on there then. Okay, Linwood, uh, member Odegaard and member Raphael are on there?
I'd like to go to Linwood.
I have also never had Linwood, I'll do Linwood.
That was easy, okay. Have a spokesman here, who else?
Yes.
Scandia Elementary, uh, member Morehead and myself are on there now?
No, I'm gonna go to Scandia.
Okay.
And the new person could, because the new person isn't on Lionel, right?
I don't.
Well, who's on, who did you put on Scandia?
Just Gail so far.
So you want Luke on there?
Okay.
Yeah.
So Luke on Scandia, uh, member Odegaard. Uh, Wyoming Elementary, member Peterson and member Olson?
I think we should keep Jeff at Wyoming.
I can go back to Wyoming.
Okay, member Peterson and member Tyson then?
Does Wyoming meet have a conflict too that are scheduled?
I didn't do Wyoming for a while, so I don't.
Okay, CLC, ALC, uh, myself and member Tyson are on there now?
I've never done that one, I'll do that one.
Okay, member Olson and then um.
Is Julian on another one yet? I don't think so.
Yeah, let's put.
Only on Forest Lake.
She's in high school.
We get one, don't we get two elementaries in one secondary building?
It generally works out like that.
Yeah.
Uh, okay, member Corcoran then? Okay, um. Forest Lake Junior High, middle, middle school. Uh, currently member Odegaard and uh, member Olson? I'd like to do this one.
I think to do that one too, I haven't done it for a long time.
Gail and Rob.
And the senior high school?
I'll do the high school.
Member Corcoran and member Peterson?
And I don't think, see, I'm not writing them down like Julia, so I'm, I'm behind the, the ball here, but if the new if I, if I put my name down there and the new person goes there, that'd be good.
Yeah, yeah.
So Julian, Karen?
Okay, so senior high, uh, member Morehead and um, who was the other one?
Me. Me.
Oh, Member Olson, okay. Transportation Office.
I'm going to miss that.
I shouldn't do that.
You'd like to do that?
You just have to know how to play cribbage.
Okay, and let's put, let's put Member Peterson on there as well.
Okay.
And then the STEP program. Currently, Member Peterson and Member Olson. Let's put Member Odegaard on there, and then it'd be good for a new person to see that program, I think.
Okay.
And anybody else interested?
So did you put...
How about Member Morehead then?
Karen.
Put two new people on it, that'd be good.
Well, they should learn about it.
Yeah, absolutely.
Yeah.
All right, could you read that back?
So for Columbus Elementary, we've got Member Rayfield and Member Odegaard. Forest Lake Elementary, Member Morehead, Member Corcoran. Forest View, Morehead, Corcoran. Lionel Lakes, Rayfield, and Peterson. Linwood Elementary is Tyson and Olson. Scandia Elementary is Tyson and Odegaard. Wyoming Elementary is Peterson and Tyson. CLC ALC is Member Olson, Member Corcoran. Middle School, Member Rayfield, Member Tyson. Senior High, Member Olson, Member Morehead. Transportation, Tyson and Peterson. And the STEP program is Member Odegaard, Member Morehead.
All right.
And then if somebody wants to switch, I think I only had one on the elementary schools.
Okay.
So if somebody can't do one, we can switch with that, so the person gets two schools.
Okay.
Okay. All right, do we have a motion to accept the selections as read?
So moved.
Good second.
Second.
Any discussion? There's no discussion, all in favor say aye. Aye. All opposed? All right.
I'll follow up with principals and see if they can adjust meeting schedules away from board meeting nights.
That'd be good.
Okay, yeah, and, yeah, it'd be great if we could get information from them about stuff. You say they've been pretty good about that, yeah. All right, new business, 10-1, improved tax levy calendar. Director Martini?
Thank you. So I just want to bring to your attention that, you know, school districts are taxing authorities, cities and counties are also taxing authorities. And for the school district, setting this property tax calendar is important, but it only represents 15% of our operating revenues. Also differentiating between cities and counties and school districts, we operate on a fiscal year basis from July 1st to June 30th. Cities and counties operate on a calendar year basis. So as they go through the process this fall, taxes represent the bulk of their revenue, and they're setting a budget that then becomes effective right away January 1st. For the school district, it's not effective until the following July 1st. So we rely a lot more on state aids and things like that. So there's a big difference in the process for school districts than what cities and counties see. And one of those things is we'll ask you come September 20th to approve the maximum levy amount. The reason for that is the Department of Education is still working on numbers, they're still inputting data, verifying data, and you'll learn what that true effect is in November. Right now, we can tell that our bonds are decreasing. We've already been through that at several meetings and talked about that. So it looks like taxes, at this point in time, for our school district are going to be going down. Hopefully, voters will approve the referendum in November. Those then would be added to what is collected for us, but we won't know that until November. We would like to schedule a hearing December 6th at 6 o'clock prior to the regular meeting of December. And so you could approve that tonight if you so choose, but if you would like to have this as an official second reading next month, we certainly can do that.
Do you have a preference?
It's simply setting a date, and it's been the typical date that we've used. So I think you're okay taking this new business item and converting it to old business.
Okay. Is everybody okay with that? All right. Do we have a motion to approve the tax levy calendar?
Move to approve 10.1.
You have a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
So this is the date we typically use.
Correct. Yes.
Okay. Any further discussion? If there's no further discussion, Member Clerk, please take a roll call.
Member Morehead, aye. Member Odegaard?
Aye.
Member Tyson?
Aye.
Member Rayfield?
Aye.
Member Olson both aye.
Thank you.
All right, we've got something done tonight.
We got a lot to do.
All right, review upcoming calendar dates. What were the two dates you mentioned, one for the...
September 22nd.
Yep, we're pulling up the open house date for September 22nd, so we'll see that on the calendar soon.
And then, and the 15th as well.
Oh, August 15th is Stars and Stripes.
Yeah, okay.
15th or...
And Steve, could you get us those community conversation dates?
I will get those, yeah.
All right. And with that, do we have a motion to adjourn?
So moved. Second.
Any discussion? If there's no discussion, all in favor say aye. Aye. All opposed? Thank you, everyone.